Take two. Good morning, it's nine o'clock. It is Wednesday, October 24th, 2018. This is a regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County. We are calling the meeting to order. If you'll please rise for the invocation, remain standing for the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag. I will pray. Father, we're blessed by the opportunity to be here this day. Father, we thank you for loving us so much. We ask your God that you watch over our nation, that you watch over our state, you watch over our county, each of the citizens that worked and play and live in this county, dear God, where. We're grateful for that opportunity to serve one another. Father, help us to be understanding of the needs of each other, let us be patient with each other, and Father, we just ask you to continue to watch over us. Father, thank you for loving us so much. It's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be seated, please? We'll now move to agenda item number two, which is public comments. If you have a public comment that you'd like to share, please come to the podium and identify yourself by name and position. And be clear on that, since we don't have video, we do have audio for our records, so... Okay, I'm gonna beat the rush. I would like to make one public comment. For those of you that might be interested, there is an election going on, early voting is open, and on the first day of early voting, Grimes County had 593, and on the second day of Grimes County, and that was a half a day of rain included, had 512. We've had 1,105 early voters in the county, and I just, I want to say to the citizens that have voted, that's awesome. And those that haven't voted, you still got this week, next week, and November the 6th. So hopefully we have a good turnout and let the people vote their preference.
Thank you.
Any other comments? And finally, are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we should move on to consent agenda items number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Consent agenda item number four, approve the monthly report submitted by the county treasurer for September 2018 and authorize advertisement of affidavit of same in accordance with Local Government Code 114.026. Consent agenda item number five, receive and approve the Grimes County third quarter investment report for the period ending September 30, 2018. Consent agenda item number six, approve amendments at previous Commissioners Court meetings, workshop on September 10, 2018 at 9:00 a.m., workshop on September 10, 2018 at 1:00 p.m., public hearing on September 12, 2018 at 8:45 a.m., regular meeting on September 12, 2018 at 9:00 a.m., special meeting on September 19, 2018, 9:00 a.m., public hearing on September 26, 2018 at 8:45 a.m., regular meeting on September 26, 2018 at 9:00 a.m., workshop meeting on October 1, 2018 at 1:00 p.m., special meeting on October 3, 2018 at 9:00 a.m., regular meeting on October 11, 2018 at 2:00 p.m., and a special meeting on October 17, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. Anybody want me to repeat that? Good. So, Commissioners, just before us on consent agenda items number three, number four, number five, number six.
I did have a question. I was gonna wait and reserve and ask it to you, but on some of the items that we put into the minutes, and it talks about the changes, like with the fire department contract, is that change kept in the minutes with the rec... with the minutes?
You mean if the minutes reflect, motion was made to make the changes as proposed?
Mm-hmm.
No, it goes in the agreement. The agreement's not typically, not necessarily kept with the minutes.
Okay.
So, I mean, now having audio or video, you have some way to go back and see what that was. There's no requirement for audio or video, so if that were to go away at any point in the future, what you're suggesting is, 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 is a good point, and we don't always put all of the changes in the minutes to any agreement, to any contract that's made. For instance, if I say, hey, on page this and page that and page the other, I think we do this, that, and the other, the minutes usually reflect contract approved as, with proposed modifications from the county attorney. And they don't always get in there. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, but it's been the practice as of late not to put all of them in there. If you have a concern about something in particular, and are concerned that it may not be clear what the changes were, or if you don't have a copy of that agreement with those changes having been made before it got signed or after it got signed, then obviously we need to address that, right?
Okay, I just wondered about how you go back and you look at records from the past, because we have had to do that, and we had to dig through other people, other Commissioners' records to get information. I just wondered how, where would that information be available?
I don't disagree with you.
Like you said, in the contract.
I don't disagree with you, just make it, you're asking a lot of the minute taker to put a whole bunch of things in the minutes.
Okay.
And it's not, it's not necessarily unreasonable to request that, it just hasn't been the practice in the past, and because, for instance, with the fire departments, the agreement speaks for itself. It gets, it gets signed with those changes made. Now, you better hope the county attorney's staff has done the right thing, he made the right changes, but you're, you're right. I mean, if you don't have those things set forth, you may have some vague recollection of. I know we changed a couple of things, but I can't remember what all they were.
We've seen that here recently, you know?
Right now, the county attorney's a pack rat, and I have a copy of everything that's ever crossed my desk pretty much, so for the time being, you'll probably be okay, but when people don't keep things or you have a change of administration, that's a valid point.
Okay. Thank you.
In conjunction with that, Commissioner, did you have any particular questions on any of the amendments that we've been asked to approve?
No, no, they're fine.
Okay.
With that being, question being answered, if anyone else doesn't have any questions?
Is Ms. Trent here this morning?
Not here at all.
No, okay. Well, we do have the investment report, and I see that we're, interest rates are, in some areas are coming up a little bit, but I guess the committee is reviewing all of that to see the best return on the county's investments.
Okay.
All right. I would like to make the motion to approve the treasurer's list, I mean, consent agenda items three, four, five, six, three, four, five, and six.
Okay.
Second motion.
There's a motion before the court on consent agenda items number three, four, five, and six by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now go to agenda item number seven, Grimes County Animal Shelter. Kristen is not here this morning, but Dan, if you'll advise the court who you are and speak loudly into the mic, that mic on Commissioner Cox's table. There you are.
Thank you. My name is Dan Egan. I'm a board member of Grimes County Animal Rescue, and Kristen Keeley, our president, could not be here today, but I'm here today because I'm very pleased to announce that the Grimes County Animal Rescue has been granted IRS 501(c)(3) status of the Internal Revenue Code. So we are now able to move forward with our fundraising efforts towards the construction of an animal shelter for the residents of Grimes County. And what that means is that contributions may now be tax deductible based on each individual's personal income situation. We are asking that all citizens who would like to participate in the fundraising efforts reach out to Kristen Keeley. For those that would like to make donations, we have a P.O. box, it's Box 767, and there's an article in, P.O. Box 767 Anderson. There's also an article today in the Navasota Examiner, which has this contact information as well. So, we'd like to, we're gonna now be moving forward onto the next stages of the project, and we're very thankful the support of the community and the county government that allowed us to get to this point. We believe that a good working relationship with the county aided in our application for 501(c)(3) status, and we'd like to thank the Grimes County Sheriff's Office for their assistance in operating the facility once it's built, and the Grimes County Commissioners Court for their willingness to provide the land for this facility. And we're also very grateful for the Grimes County citizens being patient and supportive during this approval process with the IRS. So now that that's complete, our next stages are, in this process are gonna be, among other things, recruiting volunteers to help raising money, building a website and a Facebook page so people can make contributions and volunteer their services or inquire into the status of the project, and then, of course, designing and building the facility. So those will be the next steps, and Kristen will be here to keep you updated along the way with our progress, but we're very happy to get this, this one behind us.
So the current contributions you're looking for right now is more cash than critters?
Correct, yeah. We can't take critters yet. Unfortunately, until the facility gets built, there are a number of citizens in Grimes County that have taken it upon themselves to provide their own money and time and resources, and have done an outstanding effort in, in building a, a loose network of, of animal assistance shelters, and we hope to supplement that as soon as we get this facility built.
Dan, I want to just say thank you for the work that you've done. Commissioner Dobieinsky, I mean, you've kind of led this project for the court, for the county, from the beginning, so appreciate your efforts, and glad this is finally coming together. This is a, a good deal.
We got two of the three main obstacles settled. One is the, the land.
Right.
Another is the IRS status, and the third one is raising the money. So we got two behind us and one more to go. Also, Phil Brun's one of our board members is here also. We need to know Phil.
Judge, can I ask a question? Dan, do y'all have a goal?
If you want to wait for an answer, you just want to go ahead and ask.
That was just to keep you from talking.
Is there a goal in mind, dollar-wise? We don't have a, a design completed yet, so we don't have an exact cost, but it's probably gonna be in the half a million dollar range, the building facility.
I think the judge got that covered, probably, right?
Probably. Brown paper sag, small unmarked bill, so... But with your 501(c)(3), that half a million dollars is a much more easily obtainable goal than without it, is that correct?
That, oh, absolutely, absolutely. And though we're not ready to make this announcement yet, I believe Kristen will be back shortly announcing that at least one citizen in Grimes County is gonna contribute a pretty substantial amount toward that half a million dollar target, but there's still a lot to go. Regardless of what any one person might do, there's still a lot to go.
Well, I understand your association president has recently gotten engaged.
Yes, she, she did.
So please don't let her lose her focus of what's important, okay?
We won't, we won't.
She's been, I think she's been working on this project longer than the engagement, so...
No, I think that's true. This one started back in high school.
Yeah, all right.
So she'll be back to do some of the subsequent reports.
Very good.
Any, any other questions for me?
Please. We'll open it up. Okay. Thank you very much.
I have one comment. We, we are not trying to put the people who are doing this already in the county out of business. We want to stress that. We want to work with them to, to make, move, move this forward and take care of this right animals in the county.
Yes, this, this, building an animal shelter, I think, is almost like a file cabinet. No matter how big you have, have it, it's, you're gonna fill it up.
Yeah, right.
So we don't ever expect that this is gonna solve 100% of the dog and cat animal problems in the county as far as finding them homes, but we hope this'll go a long way in making one more implement, incremental step in getting that done.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Phil, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. And that's also one of our strategic plan projects, so... Okay, moving to agenda item number eight, Lucy Pope, Human Resources Director, consider and approve the United Healthcare Supplement for 2019 and authorize the county judge's signatory. Ms. Pope, I understand you're gonna share some good news with us.
I'm, I'm hoping. Lucy Pope, H.R. Director, TAC did send me the renewal packet for our supplement, and this year, last year it was at 268.48, this year it's at 253.44. I have 18 retirees that's on this plan, and I've had nine of them that's been with us over 14 years, and they're, they're very happy with the plan that we have. We only provide medical. Our retirees have to go out and get their Part D elsewhere, but they all seem to be content with this. So I just need your approval that we need to renew this supplement.
Are there any questions for Lucy? Can y'all have a copy of the agreement?
I'll make the motion to approve the United Healthcare Supplement for 2019 and authorize the county judge's signatory.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eight by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, 10, and 11 are by our emergency management coordinator and subdivision coordinator, Mr. David Lilly. So agenda item number nine, review and take action to release the road construction bond in the amount of $850,000 for Crown Ranch, Section 6, and approve placement of sec, of the Section 6 roads into a maintenance period for one year. Crown Ranch has submitted a maintenance bond in the amount of $85,000 to the county. Mr. Lilly?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, yes, this is the Crown Ranch, Section 6. They completed construction last summer, this last summer, and Harry Walker and I went out and inspected the roads last month, and the roads are holding up very, very well, and so we feel confident that they're ready to go into the maintenance period. Just for general information, these roads are private roads, but they still have to follow the same basic procedures as public roads do in our subdivision rules. The one main difference being that is, it is a one-year maintenance period because these roads would not be adopted by the county, so there is no 50% built-out requirement for private roads. And I do have, and have turned over to the auditor's office, the maintenance bond, the $85,000 maintenance bond, that is now safely locked up, and once, assuming this is approved, I will return the construction bond to Crown Ranch.
Is this in your precinct?
Yes, it is.
Do you have any comments on that, Commissioner?
I was out there with, with Mr. Walker and, and Mr. Lilly when we looked at those. We do also have construction going on out there already. There's what, three houses, two or three houses going up already out there?
Yes, already some homes going up in that section.
Are these cement roads?
Nope.
No.
Asphalt.
Asphalt. Oh, okay, asphalt. So you said that they're private roads?
Yes, sir.
So they won't go into the county's maintenance bank?
No, they never will.
But we're not gonna, are we gonna end up with a Darryl Hall situation?
No, no, not with these roads. They, they turn the roads over to the HOAs, and they do a very good job of keeping those roads maintained.
Okay.
Judge, on that note, just to be clear, when, if a developer wants to have private roads in his or her subdivision, they're entitled to do that.
Right.
But our rules require that they bring the roads up to county specification on the front end, which is about the best that you can do. I mean, you can't protect people from themselves in all cases, and so if someone buys in a subdivision with private roads, one would hope that you wouldn't get those calls about, how come you aren't improving my roads or maintaining my roads? There, there's a required disclosure on the plat itself, which is supposed to give actual notice to buyers, but at the very least, they have constructive notice because they should've read their plat and figured out that these aren't county-maintained roads. When someone chooses to do that, obviously you hope that there's a mechanism to fund the maintenance of the roads, and that's what the HOA or the POA does.
Right.
But you're not gonna have any oversight over that entity, and you're not gonna know whether it's gonna actually raise dues, whether it's gonna enforce its rules, any of those things. This is the best you can do when somebody insists that the roads be private, which is, again, they're right, but in this case, it sounds like the court's doing all that you can to try to oversee and make sure that these roads have been constructed appropriately, and you're gonna watch them for a year to make sure they don't fall apart, and when that's over, you're gonna walk away, and we're gonna hope that these roads will hold up to the traffic and that the HOA or POA will take care of those, that maintenance.
Thank you. I'll, I'll probably be out of office by the time the roads start breaking down, but in defense of my predecessor, whoever that might be, I just wanted to make sure that the county's covered, but also the citizens that live in that area have an understanding. And I understand what you say, they ought to read the contract, but I think a lot of home buyers just figure out how much it's gonna cost them per month and leave the details to the realtors and the construction and everything else.
I don't disagree, but one of the reasons that I was making that disclosure
Sure.
was to suggest that you can't protect folks from themselves in every circumstance.
Understood.
You can only do what you can do.
Yes, sir.
And these roads, if I'm not mistaken, these are not accessible by 1774 as of yet, right?
No, as of yet. The only way in and out is through Montgomery County side, through their main gate.
Off of 1486 out there.
Yes.
Although, from the new 249 cutaway, what is it, 900 feet or?
It's not very far.
It's not very far, so if they did make a, if they chose, if their HOA approved it or what have you, they could cut an extension from the furthest most point towards Grimes County to the two, the new 249 route, and...
Their plan actually, all along, has been to eventually connect to 1774.
Yeah.
And I believe that that's, that's gonna happen eventually, once 249 gets built out, but that's several years down the road, that they recognize the need to have access on Grimes County side. It is affecting their ability to develop out because people don't want to have to drive all the way around to get in.
Well, and the reason I'm kind of current on the discussion is because I was having a conversation with the fire departments, Todd Mission in Plantersville, having access and trying to determine who's, who's quickest to get around to that addition through Montgomery County. And then the suggestion came up, well, if they do connect, they get to 249, they can reduce response time with that 900-foot extension, but that's certainly their decision to make. We're just trying to be proactive.
And I, I don't wanna beat this horse anymore if I don't have to, but east of 1774, it will be access denied where you cannot get from the property on to 249. So Crown won't be, their people won't be able to get on to 249 as it's in Grimes County unless they drive east into Montgomery County and get on it and then come back through. So as I understand it, Crown owns property that's adjacent to 1774 that will allow them to connect to their development, and there will be an underpass in 249 that will be internal to the division, so that people from the east side of 249 can get to the west side and out 7, on 1774, but they won't be able to get right on to 249. It's different than the west side of 1774, which is non-toll, access is not denied, you can get right on the, on 249 from the property that's adjacent to it.
And we, we've already approved a thoroughfare from there to 1486 also, about a year and a half ago, to go from 1774 all the way to 1486.
It's internal to the division, right.
Where that underpass is there.
Right.
That's why they put the underpass in that, in that section of 249.
So we have, the item, is there any further discussion or questions for Mr. Lilly? Do you care to make a motion, Commissioner Dobieinsky?
I, I believe that we release the road construction bond in the amount of $850,000 for Crown Ranch, Section 6, and approve the placement of the sixth, of the Section 6 roads into a maintenance period of one year. Crown Ranch has submitted a maintenance bond in the amount of $85,000 to the county.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Dobieinsky, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. All in fa, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number 10, consider and take action to approve the payment to Energy, Inc. not to exceed $22,000 for installation of a power line to the Bedi's Communication Tower site. Mr. Lilly?
Yes, Judge, we discussed this last week, and there has been a major change to this issue.
And when you say "we," that was you and I?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And for the Commissioners Court's benefit, the, what this is for is, we need power run out to the setup for the tower site that they're building, but the COG is working on right now to complete at the Bedi's site, and I met with the Energy individual a couple weeks ago, and we walked the site, and at the time, we determined probably the best option would be to run a power line from 1696 up the city's right-of-way on their road up to the, where the tower will be built. But this, they projected this would cost upwards of $22,000 to do. Part of the reason for that was that a portion of the cable would have to be buried because there is a helipad located right along that section, but since that time, we've actually gone out and revisited that site, went out there with the mayor of Bedi's, and we met with the property owner who has, there's a power pole on his property on the backside, which is much closer to the tower site, and he was very supportive, saying, you know, basically, we needed an easement from him to be able to use, to access that pole, and he said, not a problem. He said that, you know, he's all for it and he'll support that. So I've already reached out to Energy. They have not given me a quote yet, but we anticipate this will come much closer to the original plan, $10,000 that the COG had budgeted for this project, and this money will be reimbursed by the COG. Problem was that they probably couldn't have done the $22,000, so we were facing the possibility of having to foot part of that bill, but now that's no longer an issue. We're actually gonna use that other location, and there's no need to bury a cable. It only requires, I think, one additional pole rather than four or five, so the cost is gonna be a lot less than what it was projected.
And the $10,000 is already covered by the COG?
They have that budgeted for it. Yes.
Should it exceed that, then, it comes back to Commissioners Court?
Well, I talked to Mr. Sheridan about that, and he said that they will do their best to cover the cost no matter what. This is a part of a multi-county project, and there's some other sites where, like for instance, they had $10,000 projected for at least two other sites, and those came under budget, so they have the ability to move some of their money around through the grant to cover additional costs if those do arise, but I don't anticipate that'll happen with this change.
Good news.
I move to approve the payment to Energy, Inc. not to exceed $22,000 for the installation of a power line to the Bedi's Communication Tower site. Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 10 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Lilly, thank you for your work on that project. Agenda item number 11, review and take action to approve procurement of automated external defibrillators, better known as AEDs, to be installed in county buildings. See attachment number 11. We had discussion on this last week. We agreed as a court to table it so we could get a, another quote, an additional information. Mr. Lilly, do you want to fill us in, please?
Sure. Judge and Commissioners, again, as the judge mentioned, we met with Rhonda Ritchie yesterday and discussed...
And we is?
You and I. The judge and I met in his chambers with Rhonda Ritchie, who heads the volunteer EMS in the county, and she also was one of the key project people to get the AEDs that the, have been provided to the Sheriff's Office. And we discussed the different options that we have available, and she actually shared with us that the source that they use for their AEDs that they provide to the Sheriff's Office was different from the three that we had had quotes from. And these also are for different AEDs, but from what she told us, the types of AEDs, it doesn't really matter which version you use, they all basically function the same way, they all have the same capabilities. When you take it out, anybody can pull it off the wall and use it, and it goes through and gives them a audible instruction on how to use the device, and also, you know, basically, you know, it's, I wouldn't say idiot-proof, but it, it's, it's designed to be as simple as possible so that people can use the device. Another thing she informed us is that the issue of having a licensing or a, some type of coverage as far as making it a legal medical device...
Prescription under a doctor.
Right. That is, that is not an issue with these. These are designed for people to be able to use, even people that aren't trained, where basically the, the whole idea of having that coverage is to protect the person and possibly the county or entity that has it used. In this case, the Good Samaritan law already covers that issue, and she said that you don't need a maintenance agreement or a licensing of these devices to be able to use them legally.
Also, they come with the caring case, and...
Caring case is provided, but Commissioner, in most instances, what we would do is we wall-mount these... What we would do is we wall mount these so that they are in a known location in particular buildings throughout. So the wall mounts are not free, the regular price is two ninety-five, the current quote that they've given us is a hundred and sixty dollars. Now, we would have to install those, but with the assistance of our, um, maintenance team here, I don't think that would be an issue. Also, anything further, Mr. Lilly, on this?
Oh, the only thing I was gonna mention is where we also talked about the number that we feel the county needs. Uh, original count that I provided to the judge was ten and that's based on the actual ten buildings that the county has at this time. Uh, but we discussed the possibility of reducing that cost by, like for instance, having one in the Road and Bridge building and that would be available to the district attorney's office also. Uh, and, and, uh, what was the other site, Judge?
The other one was, uh, Agrilife and, and the, uh, putting it with, uh, Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Cox's location. What do y'all call that officially?
Agrilife Extension Bill.
Okay.
Um, also I did have some questions from Ms. Ritchie that she was able to answer for me. Um, my concern was what if, what if you didn't, didn't know if that person needed, uh, a defibrillator used on them? She said the machine will detect and tell you whether or not, you know, it's necessary.
Right, right. And she also explained how these things actually function, you know, it's, it's a common, and I had shared this misconception. It's a common misconception that when you see like on Hollywood, you know, movies or whatever, someone's getting shocked with paddles or these things, you use one of these devices, that it's actually shocking them, well, that's a misnomer, they're not shock paddles. What it does is the heart goes into a defibrillation, which makes, basically means it's not, it's not getting its signals right. And these devices help reset the heart. So in effect, it almost like stops the heart briefly and the heart, you know, if it's, you know, in most cases, it'll restart itself and resume normal rhythm.
And she explained it, she said it takes it from a flutter back to a beat.
Yeah.
Now, do these have to be, um, uploaded, the information from the machine, do we have to?
If the machine is indeed activated, then what the company requests is that the information that the machine gathers, it stores it some way, we have the ability to take a USB, put it into the machine, download the data. We send that to this company and that way they're able to collect, they, they don't know name or person or anything, they just know activation. So they can continue to see that their equipment is working properly, that they can, uh, improve their equipment and so forth. So it's not a situation of, well, we have to take the unit and send the entire unit in, we can take the data. And what was gracious about Ms. Ritchie is she said that she would, because she's already doing this for the sheriff's department and for the first responders, she would be more than happy to do that for the county, just as a service as a first responder, which I thought was, uh, rather heroic of her.
Well, we appreciate her insight and her experience, uh, that she brings to the table.
And she, I don't recall what situation it was, but she had them one day and the next day they had to activate one of the defibrillators. For an, do, do you remember where that?
I just know that the one that occurred at the sheriff's office, but that's before they procured the ones that they have now.
Right. Anyway, she, you know, timing's everything, you either have it or you don't, so.
So Judge, I've got a couple of observations here. I was looking at the list in our packet of possible locations and I know the fairgrounds is not included on that list and it would seem wise to me that that's a, a meeting place that generally has the most number of people gathered at any given time. And if we're, we're gonna place these places, then I think that should be listed in, in the list that, for consideration to add.
See, Commissioner, that's why you're on the court, bringing those things to our attention.
The Go Texan Committee has allocated a thousand dollars, I think, to purchase one of those, I'm, I'm pretty sure we have. So we just need to add it to this order, let me check with Stacy and see, make sure.
You, you think that's correct?
I think, I'm pretty sure it's correct.
If you didn't hear, you said Go Texan probably has money that they're willing to donate to provide it for the fairgrounds?
Yes.
Okay. That's an excellent thought.
And we brought this up last year, uh, well, not last year, earlier this year, when, when, uh, I saw the presentation at the, at the sheriff's department when they got them.
Okay. So.
Judge, do we look in the budget to see?
We do, yes, uh, thank you for that question. The question is, do we have money to pay for these? Uh, I, it would be my desire to take it out of our strategic plan money, uh, be quite, because we have an ex, not an excess amount. We have an amount in excess of what this contract would be and still leave us some to work. The strategic plan projects or issues that, that might come up, not all of them, but, uh, certainly when we did the budget this year, where we found we had money and we didn't have a specific dedication, we knew somewhere along the line, uh, strategic plan could probably use it. So to answer your question, it could be moved from the strategic plan to cover this.
Now, um, I see, okay, that's a dope place, I got it.
Commissioner Cox, you brought up something last week about, do we have to change your job descriptions and is there a stipend? And my, my response to that would be no. And, and the reason for that, the training that's going to be provided by whatever vendor is included in their bid, but the training is gonna be voluntary and people, just like learning the old days of CPR, pump and blow, or if you know how to work a fire extinguisher, maybe you're on the emergency fire team of a building. So this is not something that I believe we need to put in an individual's job description or, uh, even consider it in the area of, uh, compensation.
Sure. And the reason that I pointed it out is because there was some illusion whenever the, the presentation was initially given that it could possibly be mandatory for employees to be certified to do that. If we're, if we're not gonna do that, I don't, I agree with you.
Sure. I would insist that people in my office take the training because that would help me out immensely.
We have a question on the floor.
Yes, sir?
Has, since this is, uh, an apparatus, is this basically gonna hang on a wall for months at a time without being used? Is there any plan in place to check them on a regular basis, make sure they're gonna remain operational? Not I'd like to, with your fire extinguisher, don't like to check them.
They, they have a maintenance checklist that they provide. The batteries that we are getting are a four-year battery and it's an eight-year warranty on the equipment. If we, depending on which one we decide on, but if we're, the one we're looking at, it is a four-year lithium battery. Now, in the event the unit is activated, it automatically says you need to replace the battery. And then they service that for us, or they provide it for us. You're welcome. One more question, yes, sir?
Um, Mr. Dobianski said that, uh, for the entity, uh, that wanted to set one of these AEDs up in the Expo Center?
Yes, sir, that's a Go Texans group.
Correct. Would this, is it your aim to make these, this one compatible with the, the rest of them?
Absolutely.
Are they on their own or what?
No, the, and to answer your question, that was David Patrick. The, the question, would that unit be the same as these? Yes, because these, if we go with this quote, which seems to be the best quote at the time, it matches the ones that we've put into the deputies' vehicles, so everybody's using the same kinda unit. But even if we didn't do that, if you bought from Company A, Company B, Company C, other than the stickers on the units, you can barely tell they're different. But an excellent question. Is there any further discussion?
So, yes, I've got one question.
Sure.
Are we gonna, assuming that there's a motion made, are we gonna budget for nine in the, as a contingency in the event that the Go Texans, decides that they can or won't, or something comes up for an extra, because I believe it's eight right now?
It is, that's what's, that's what the quote is. My desire is that we move, make a decision on the eight. And if Go Texans falls that they don't have, finds they don't have the funds to do, then let's come back and, and activate a ninth or one more additional. And I'm sure that we can get it for the same price as these eight. But I, we don't know when we're gonna need them, so I would like us to be able to start moving on this pretty quick, since we've talked about it a long. Are there any questions on the different contracts?
Judge, I just have a question. Uh, I'm thinking about the, the fairgrounds and, you know, when there's five or ten thousand people out there and there's only one.
Well, that'd be above capacity, so there wouldn't be, but anyway.
Okay, okay. But, um, you know, my concern is, are there gonna be signs up telling people where this unit is located? So that when it, if it is needed, they know where to go to find it. Cause what good is it if, if nobody knows where to get it?
The, and that's a valid point. I think the answer to that is we would work with Randy Krieger, who's our fairgrounds manager, with his assistance to determine what's the best location. But also we could modify our agreement with potential renters that even on the agreement, we can say AED on site. Something along those lines, so that at least whoever organizes the function will have an awareness that we have that available.
And the box that they, that they're mounted in, it's clearly marked with, like, usually I think bright red letters saying AED. Uh, and there's a glass window on it, usually marked on the window where you can see the AED device through the window. So, you know, they try and make it as visible as possible.
And so is this, uh, especially at the fairgrounds, is this gonna be mounted on an exterior wall?
No, inside.
Into inside.
Inside.
Well, what if the building that it's in is locked and they're meeting in a different building and they need it in the other building?
Well, that's a good point, you know, so at the end of the day, then we could put three out there or four out there, three inside and one outside. But it's, and, and maybe that's the direction we go, but right now we have no, we have nothing for anybody at this time.
Right, I understand that. And I just wanted to point out, you know, these different scenarios that could happen.
Sure.
And one might not be enough.
Understood, but that's one of the reasons that we put the units in the deputies' vehicles first off. Because them, they, along with our first responders, are gonna be quick to the scene. Now, you know, how quick is quick, I don't know, but that's why we, we, uh, equip them first to help eliminate some of the, the issues that we're dealing with.
Anytime, anytime the fairground is rented, it has to have, with a large crowd, you have to have security out there. So you're gonna have deputies out there. And I know during the Go Texan, uh, event that we have, we have sometimes as many as five deputies out there and where we have a large crowd out there. So you have a number of, of these out there because they are in their vehicles and, uh.
You, you bring up a good consideration, something we need to be aware of. I think we can work through those issues. Commissioner Cox, were you gonna make a comment?
Uh, no, not right now.
Okay.
I was gonna make one.
All right.
Why not go ahead and purchase one, at least for the fairgrounds now, while you're ordering? Because regardless to whether or not Go Texan takes up the price of it or not, it's still a Grimes County building.
Sure.
Yeah.
At least you'd have one.
And to address what Ms. Nichols was saying, the, these that we're considering do have a carrying case. So if you're having a function in one building and the unit is wall mounted in another, it doesn't seem out of the room the possibility to put it in a case so you can relocate it to another building. Just saying.
Now, did it come with the case?
Yes.
Okay.
Cases are provided at no charge, the carrying case. Not only a carrying case, it is a rugged carrying case.
And, and you get a breathing mask too?
Yes.
A rescue kit with the breathing mask.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the contract from Sterling Medical, or the quote from Sterling Medical. They have quoted eight units, but recommendation by Commissioner Walker is to possibly change that to nine. So I'll change it to nine units, which would increase the cost by whatever amount one more unit and one more wall mount would create. Uh, and that the funds be line item transferred from strategic plan to wherever we need to transfer it to cover these costs.
Seventeen ninety.
I'm sorry?
Seventeen hundred and ninety dollars is the additional cost.
No, it wouldn't be that much.
If you're gonna get the cabinet.
The unit is nine ninety-five and the.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the list price.
Getting the sale price, the quote price, sorry. The nine ninety-five is for the unit and a hundred and sixty, so that's a thousand ninety-five, that's eleven fifty-five?
Yeah.
Just like that. Eleven fifty-five additional, so. So I stand with my motion for nine units, uh, the nine, ninety-two forty plus eleven fifty-five. I guess that would make it about five, nine, ten-three ninety, ten-three ninety-five, ten thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. And we would place them in the locations that we've previously discussed with the addition of the Expo, uh, the fairgrounds Expo Center. Is that, Mary, did you get that motion, or Sheree?
I second the motion.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eleven by County Judge Joe Fow, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Good job, Commissioners, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lilly. And are you gonna contact them or you want me to contact them?
Uh, let me, I'll get your, the contact information from you later and I'll be holding them.
That's great, thank you. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Road and Bridge, Patty, you gonna stand there for Mr. Walker? All right. Uh, Agenda Item Number Twelve, Consider, Consideration and Possible Action on the Renewal of a Special Road Use Indemnity, Indemnity Agreement with Troy Construction for the construction of the Enterprise. Yes, what he said, pipeline, attachment number twelve. Patty, Ms. Armus?
Yes. All they're really wanting to.
Can I ask you to speak up so you get recorded?
All they're really wanting to do is add a subcontractor for the re-vig- vegetation, um, on this agreement, that's all they're, they're wanting to do.
So it doesn't affect us terribly much at all?
No, sir, not, not much.
I move to renew, uh, I'm moved to approve the renewal of a special road use indemnity agreement with Troy Construction for the construction of the Enterprise Revoloba Pipeline.
Second motion.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Twelve by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry, uh, opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Consider, Consideration and Possible Approval of Waterline Installation Permit Application by Anderson Water Company on County Road Two Thirty-five, that would be our attachment number thirteen. Patty? Self-explanatory?
Yes, sir, you should have, all should have copies of it. Mr. Walker did visit with them regarding this.
There was nothing unique about it that I saw.
Judge, I will, maybe clarification if somebody.
Sure.
On number eleven and number fifteen?
Yes, sir.
It references electrical lines and when I read the contract, I did, maybe I'm confused, but I thought it was for a water line.
It also says a electrical line in twelve.
But does it have something to do with, uh, prior to the expiration of one year? I, I don't know, uh.
I think it's for a water line.
Right.
It is. It is.
That's a bunch of R.
R?
It's just the indemnification clause.
Yeah, uh, my staff tells me that several years ago, somebody else pointed that out and we made the change and, and between our office and the offices that use these forms, it's not always the case that we have the updated form. We need to strike where it says electrical. This is clearly a water line, so.
We can get that correct.
Okay, so it would be a strike on, on eleven, twelve, and fifteen. Is that right, Mr. Com, Commissioner?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Can I, uh?
Yes.
Patty, did Harris say anything about a hydrant? Is it?
Uh, no, they did not come back about.
Cause well, I think at some point, there was the suggestion that each time there's a crossing, there ought to be a consideration of whether hydrant would go in. And in the past, there's been reasoning for why it couldn't be done, e- even whether it's dry hydrant or not, um.
This is a two-inch water line, so it's below the six inches.
Quality by force.
Somebody wanna make a motion with contention upon us striking the, the verbiage out of eleven, twelve, and fifteen on electrical?
I move that we approve the water line installation permit application by Anderson Water Company and strike out electrical in items eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Fifteen. I believe it's fifteen, Commissioner.
Fifteen.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number twelve.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
I'm sorry, thirteen, that's where I'm at. On, uh, agenda item number thirteen, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Patty, would you make sure that that language does get changed?
And a lot of times, people may, water companies may have the old forms.
Right.
Cause I do notice that it's, this was done in twenty seventeen.
Right, so it's revised.
So, yeah, so potentially it could be, but I, I will make sure to note those changes.
And, and there was a time where we had one form and I think it was Bob Cochrane decided to turn that into, instead of one form for pipelines, turn, uh, well, gas pipelines, turn it into a form for water lines, a form for electrical line, a form for whatever. A lot of it was cut and pasted and as I said, Corey reminded me that somebody made, pointed this out years ago and made the change, but goes back to, uh, Commissioner Walker's point, you know, um, don't always have the updated form in the hands of the person that's signing the document.
Sure, okay. All right. Uh, do you then, will you share the road and bridge report with us?
Sure.
Um, on October thirteenth and through the sixteenth, portion of Grimes County received over approximately seventeen to twenty-one inches of rain in some areas. Three bridges and twenty-five to thirty roads sustained damage with forced, which forced road closures. Road and bridge crews have been out putting signs, barricades, and repairing damages. A spot overlay slash level up was placed on County Road four twenty-three with performance grade cold mix. Replaced culverts on County Road one seventy-five in River Oaks. And just to note, the equipment auction began on October sixteenth and will run until October thirty-first. These items are listed on GOV deals. Just for a note, County Road one forty-one at the bridge is still closed. County Road four oh three is still closed. County Road one twenty-six from one twenty-three to one twenty-nine is still closed and one thirty-two.
I'm sorry, one twenty-six is closed from one twenty-three?
From one twenty-three to one twenty-nine.
Thank you.
And then County Road one thirty-two at the bridge off Highway ninety is still closed. Uh, the others on one oh two and one sixty-two are all open at the present time. However, if we do receive additional rain, the river will come back up and close those roads.
Uh, this is a, do you know offhand, Patty, if citizens have access in and out using other ways?
Of all the ways, yes.
They have alternate routes?
No one is stranded. All these roads have alternate routes.
Very good.
The Great Hall has been performing channel work and ditch work on two oh three, County Road one sixty-two, one twenty-three. And, and they repaired washouts on two nineteen and four oh nine.
May I add to your report?
Sure.
I'd like to say, or ask our citizens to please be patient with us. Uh, as, uh, the rain has caused a lot of damage to, to, uh, a lot of roads. We're getting a lot of calls and some of them are, are, um, minor compared to what other people are dealing with, so, uh, we will try to take care of all of our roads.
And sometimes we have to utilize crews from the south end for the north end or crews from the north end to the south end when we do sustain such damages. Um, so it does kinda take them away from their routine maintenance when that happens.
And this is record setting, seventeen to twenty-one inches of rain. That's a lot of water.
That's half a hurricane.
Mm-hmm, yeah, the, the north end said that it was more damaging for them than Hurricane Harvey was.
And in conjunction with this, last Thursday, we filed a disaster declaration with the governor, putting our name on the list of having road damage and so forth. So in the event we hit those particular levels of accumulation and then the state hits it, then the state can go for fed money and this way we can go for state money. If you don't ask, you don't get. It's kind of the thought behind it, but we had so much, uh, water damage that felt it was the right thing to do at the time, still do.
And did we lose one of the bridges we just put in?
Yes, on one thirty-two. Jared's, uh, Mr. Wakefield's already been back out there and once the water recedes and everything, they are going to do additional work to that bridge.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you. Going to agenda item number fourteen, County Judge Joe Fow, considering take action regarding the burn ban and authorize County Judge's signatory. I would suggest we take no action at this time? Item fifteen, receive any updates on the strategic plan? Are there any at this time?
I knew, uh, Constable with, uh, Constable Jarvis is working with Road and Bridge to, uh, get the list of roads that we have weight limits on and, uh, kinda making a game plan. I actually met with, with them.
Don't make Freddy speak up.
Last week. And, uh, we're moving forward, trying to get that, uh, system going.
I, I would ask that while he's assessing some of the roads to please, um, work also with, um, the garbage department. We are finding a lot of, um, excessive mattresses and sofas and being dumped in our streams and they wash downstream, so, so.
Anything else, sir?
They're also doing, he's also doing a lot of, uh, patrolling of county roads and have written citations for feeding, uh, not only on the county roads, but on the, around the school zones also. He worked, uh, High Point. Issued a lot of citations out there a couple of weeks ago because people are flying through that, through that school zone there on one oh five, so. And he's gonna work all over the county, gonna work in the south end of the county, the north end of the county. And he's trying to learn the different roads within the county, uh, so that we can police them once we get, uh, the rules in place that we, we're gonna enforce.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda item number sixteen, discuss and determine plan of action to fill JP three vacancy after the November sixth election and election canvas. I put this on the agenda, uh, as we at court, as we all know, Judge LaFleur, uh, resigned, did not complete his term. He resigned last June thirty. We've had that position open, covered by JP one and JP two, uh, Judge A Court and Judge Underwood. We are having an election, uh, the general election is on November the sixth. So we're gonna know the initial outcome that evening. We then have to canvass the vote to make it official. It would be my desire with the court's permission that once the canvas has been completed and the votes have been verified, because this is a contested race, that we then as a court be prepared to, whoever wins that race, bring them in, let them fill out the balance of Judge LaFleur's term that would end on twelve thirty-one of this year and would have them ready to rock and roll one-one of twenty nineteen. It would also, because I got a notice from the judicial training that whoever wins, whether that's Mr. Wells or Mr., uh, Loughlin, whoever wins, there is, I'll call it mandatory training scheduled early December and then the second in January. And the fourth, the third component would be in April. And it's a total of eighty hours of training that they're going to have to go through so that they are effective in their position. Since we do have that position open, it would be my desire that we as a court say, okay, candidate A or candidate B, you won, we're going to bring you in, we'll swear you in into that office early, so you're available to go to that training, uh, and then it's not a, of course, it's no longer an issue because they've given a, the AG's given an opinion that if we know they're going in that position and even though they aren't sworn in, we the county could pay for that training, but this negates any of that discussion, so.
Is it, would it be for training purposes only because would they have, then have authority to do, actually do the job?
Well, to answer your question, it's not just for training, but part of it is to get them in there, get familiar with their office, get familiar with their staff, their surroundings, so I guess essentially it is training. Uh, but it's not the, the designated training that they're going to be receiving in the schools. But at least this way, they are a employee of the county, uh, as they go through that training.
How many days before we canvass the votes?
The, we have, uh, I checked with our elections administrator and I think we will have, because you have, if you get any contested ballots, people have, I believe, David, if you know different than I do, I think it's six days if they don't have ID or blah, 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 they get to do a, uh, ballot that we have to verify and they have six days to authenticate that. If they don't, that gets thrown out, then so many days after it, I don't think it's, uh, but a couple of days, then the canvas, uh, occurs. But I would, I would suggest probably about, or not knowing what day of the week it is, but by November twentieth or thereabout, uh, we could probably have, uh, a clear election, a clear, clearly declared winner, uh, of that election. And I think when I was looking at the calendar, this, the second, the seventh is gonna be the special meeting in November. So the fourteenth would be the regular meeting in November. And I'm thinking no later than the special meeting on November twenty-first. We could have it decided, finalized, true and correct. We could probably swear the, the, uh, winning candidate in at that time. So my target would be November twenty-one at this time.
Judge, I just wanna point out, just in case y'all wanna reschedule things, the twenty-first is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
I was gonna say that. We're gonna be here. Okay, but thank you. We could take the person out to a turkey lunch or something? Is that what you're saying? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with you. I, I think the sooner the better. Um, we have our other two JPs filling in the gap, so to speak, and that's a lot of JP work.
Yep.
A JP taking on the additional burdens of another court.
Right.
Uh, to the benefit of the county. So, yeah, I would be in agreement.
And a thank you to you, Commissioner, because you've been taking care of some of the administrative functions with the personnel in that office in the absence of a full-time JP.
Yeah, you're, that's nothing in comparison to what the JPs are.
Understand, but it's all, but at the end of the day, it's all of us working together to make it happen, so.
So that, a- and, you know, going back to the twenty-first, I mean, JP's gotta be on duty twenty-first on every day.
Oh, I don't have, I'll be here on the twenty-first. I just, you know, I know that sometimes when holidays come in, fall in that timeframe, that we rearrange the court dates.
And, and in consideration of the two candidates and both of them happened to be here this morning, but when I got that notice of information, uh, and I understand y'all undoubtedly got it and passed it on, but I had made copies of that information, got it to them, so if they have a civilian occupation at this time or have a worldwide cruise scheduled, they have time to be making, uh, changing their plans so that they're available for the training. Cause that training's important, cause if it doesn't happen now, it's a whole year later and, uh, that's not gonna benefit their, their, uh, precincts. So I guess I will make a motion that we approve filling the vacancy of JP three with the declared winner of the precinct three contested race. It's going to finalize on November the sixth. After the canvas of the vote with the understanding, most likely, we could swear them in on November the twenty-first. Please don't ask me to repeat that. I have a second.
Commissioner Walker, you see the problem, right?
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number sixteen by County Judge Joe Fow, seconded by Commissioner Philip Cox. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen, be prepared. Agenda item number seventeen, to discuss and take action on the recently budgeted and initiated two percent COLA for all Grimes County employees. I also had this placed on the agenda because some things came up after we approved this, after we paid this, uh, that I didn't consider, uh, because of my past, past practices and, uh, the private business world out there. When I proposed the two percent, I thought the two percent would only apply to hourly base rate. That was not the understanding of the auditors and the auditors, uh, figured the calculations and applied the two percent to the base rate, longevity, gas allowance, and those kinds of things. The world that I came from, it was always the base rate, it was always the, if there was a travel allowance, it would apply to that. But it never applied to shift defer, shift differentials or certificate pay. Uh, we did not deal with longevity, so those kind of things did not come to my mind and therefore I didn't bring it up during our discuss, budget discussions. But we're now there where it was figured into the individual's rate, their base rate and for those that get.
Stipend.
Stipen, the, the stipend for, uh, the long-term, for tenure, the two percent was added to that dollar twenty. It was not added to certificate pay and things of that sort. So the question is how do, where do we go from here? How do we unravel or undo what's been done or do we leave things as they're, they are? I have had discussion with the auditors, uh, rather lengthy discussion and I became aware of some things yesterday that I wasn't aware of. And that is, once upon a time, our tenure was ten percent of the individual's hourly rate when they reached tenure, the ten years. And then at some point, it became twenty-five hundred dollars a year, which calculated out to about a, a dollar twenty per hour, so that's the way we did it. And then there was discussion, okay, the policy says we're going to pay twenty-five hundred dollars once they hit ten years of service. And I got to thinking, well, we got a twenty-five hundred dollar window that we're dealing with here, but when we add the dollar twenty to somebody's hourly rate and if they work overtime, then they are probably enjoying more than the twenty-five hundred dollars, which would then be contrary to our policy on compensation, uh, in the employee manual. So we can have just a whole lot of discussion on this, but I am not of the opinion, and I'm okay to do that, but I'm not of the opinion to say, I didn't make myself clear, therefore. I'm okay to do that, but I'm not of the opinion to say, I didn't make myself clear, therefore, I didn't make it clear to the other commissioners, and that two percent that we paid to the shift range difference, I mean, the ten, tenure differential, we need to go back and collect that. That's not, I don't think, healthy, because the COLA was for two things in my mind. One, to offset the increase of daily expenses that our employees deal with, and also, it's designed to be a little bit of a motivational tool or morale booster. So I think if we try to collect it back, that's going to take away from the morale boost, as big or as small as that might be. So for considerate, and anything's open for consideration, but a proposed solution, I believe, could be as simple as this. Looking at the policy on compensation, going to item number four, where it talks about the ten-year pay increase, it says, effective October one, twenty-eleven, employees who achieve ten years of continuous service with Grimes County shall receive a pay increase of twenty-five hundred dollars to commence on the day immediately following the anniversary of the employee's tenth year of continuous service. We talk about the twenty-five hundred in item four A, in item four B, and item four D, and it would be my recommendation, Court, that we just change the twenty-five hundred dollar number in all three instances to a dollar twenty per hour to their current hourly rate. And the amount of overtime that any department works has already been approved by the court, so we've given them a budgeted amount of overtime, so we're going to limit to some degree that additional dollar twenty extended out there. It's, it doesn't matter what their hourly rate is today, tomorrow, or the next day, they're going to get a dollar twenty per hour, tacked to their pay for their tenure. And then put a notation that says, at the bottom, we could say, tenure will become part of their current salary. Future percent salary increases will be calculated on the current salary. That way, we're just looking at a current salary, and hopefully there would be no confusion. But I, I, my research, I say my research, my knowledge didn't let me know that we had paid tenure on somebody's hourly rate on that ten percent. So the example given to me, somebody might have been making seven dollars an hour, their tenure was worth seventy cents per hour additional. Somebody else is making twenty dollars an hour, their tenure at ten percent is worth two dollars an hour. So my suggestion was, is that we make it equal across the board, somewhat using the twenty-five hundred dollar number, but that equates to about a dollar twenty per hour for the two thousand and eighty hours that are normally scheduled work hours in the course of a year.
So now, would we back, back from this year's budget? I mean-
Say, would we back it from?
Is it going to back it out?
No, because when we did all of the budget numbers, correct me if I'm wrong, but the auditors had already calculated in there that amount into the budget, so nobody's, nobody should be running short budget-wise on their salary, because the auditors had already done that, and when I found out that the auditors had, had done it, I'm like, oh, why did we do that? And I was going through my past practice and knowledge, and I didn't, just went with that.
So basically, we will be changing the policy to reflect what we've been doing in the past years.
Yes.
Is what it boils down to.
And this is for, excuse me, this would not be for new hires. I, I'm not talking about the tenure, I'm talking about, it says all, the two percent COLA for all.
We did not budget for new, we did not budget a two percent increase from new hire. That was clarified.
If somebody comes to work today and their job pays fifteen dollars an hour, they're not going to get fifteen dollars an hour plus two percent, they're coming in at fifteen dollars an hour. Because we were just, the COLA is only intended to make current active employees whole.
So what's the suggested policy change?
The, the policy change is in, and you can find it on page one, uh, page fifty-one of the employee handbook at this time, it's under C, policy on compensation, item four, item A, B, and D, and the recommendation is where we say twenty-five, that they receive an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars, the suggestion is to change that twenty-five hundred dollars to a dollar twenty per hour, that effectively makes it the same. The only advantage somebody's going to have, if they work ten hours of overtime in the course of the year, they're going to earn another twelve dollars because of their tenure.
So we're going to strike the twenty-five hundred?
My recommend, my suggestion is strike the twenty-five hundred in those three places, change them to a dollar twenty per hour to their hourly rate, and put a defining note, an asterisk in here somewhere, that just says, tenure will become part of their current salary. Future percent salary increases will be calculated on the current salary. So once they hit that ten years, we'll add a dollar twenty an hour to their pay, and then that becomes their pay rate until they decide to leave or retire.
Are they getting increases?
Sure, you're right, because they could promote to another job or change jobs.
Well, and also, also merit increases and additional cost of living.
But regardless of whatever their rate of pay is, we're just going to put in a dollar twenty for their tenure. That would be my recommendation.
That equals twenty-four hundred and ninety-six dollars. And you can't, on an hourly basis, you can't get exactly twenty-five hundred for the twenty-eight hours a year.
So letter C talks about payable in equal amounts at each pay period, is that going to change?
Strike that last part out.
Strike that out?
Yes.
Okay.
So it would just, this benefit does not apply to elected officials, is all that being said?
And if, and if commissioners would approve this, or at least agree to this language, what we can do is we can revise the policy, and we can have hard copy in front of you folks next Wednesday, but with the understanding that we'll just continue to drive under the, the way we are right now. Would that be agreeable?
I think that fixes the problem.
I really don't want to table it, but I mean, have an understanding that, okay, that's the way we want to change the language, we'll get it put into the language, Lucy, with your help, and then we'll get copies, hard copies of that, so you can completely read it, make sure that the language that you're agreeing to is what you think we agreed to, if that makes sense. All right.
Would that be effective today or effective? I mean, is-
They can't actually vote on the change of policy today because that's not, that's on the agenda.
Yes, we can, we can vote on it. But I, I, I mean, if we're just replacing twenty-five hundred dollars with a dollar twenty an hour and go strike that phrase at, at a second C, I'm good voting on it today.
Okay. Well, but is it, can we do that with the agenda that's- Yeah, it says discuss and take action on the recently budgeted and initiated two percent COLA, so. Counselor, agreed?
I'm okay with it.
Good. If he's not walking out, we can move forward, man.
And to include that notation about the tenure, they come, they're a little inside the E and S, or something.
How about I make the motion so that I get the language in front of me?
Yeah.
I'm going to make the motion that on agenda item number seventeen, we're going to revise the Grimes County Employee Manual, page fifty-one, item C, policy on compensation, item number four, tenure pay increase, and in section A, B, and D, we will replace the twenty-five hundred dollars with a dollar twenty per hour. On item C, we are going to delete, well, we're just going to put a period after elected officials, and then we will put a definer, an asterisk at the bottom of F, that says, tenure will become part of their current salary. Future percent salary increases will be calculated on the current salary. That is my motion. Is there a second?
A second. Could I add to the end of that motion, in order to confirm that the two percent COLA applies to tenure money as well as the regular salary? That, that makes it related to the agenda item.
Say that again, please.
So can you just put parentheses after salary increase and put merit dash COLA in other salary adjustments?
You won't shoot.
Okay, go ahead, Josh.
The agenda item says, take action on the two percent COLA. Everything you just said is not necessarily related to the two percent COLA unless your minutes reflect that this decision is so that the two percent COLA is clarified. That's why I just added, I was asking to add that to the end of your motion. Otherwise, you need to put, you need to put on a future agenda, change your policy on tenure money. Has nothing to do with two percent COLA. Follow me?
Yes, I do. Do we have to put the two percent COLA adjustment? Can we just put COLA adjustment?
No, I, I just wanted to say, at the end of the, the minutes need to reflect that this decision is made because it's clarification of how the two percent COLA affects the tenure.
Okay. You got that, Mary?
At the end of your motion.
No.
He said just put that at the end of your motion.
End of motion. What he said.
I'm sure Commissioner Walker now regrets asking how, how come it is the minutes don't reflect everything that's in the motion?
But you can see where it could get misconstrued.
Of course.
And calculated on the current salary, this is to clarify the two percent COLA adjustment. And I have a second still? All right. Is the, is there any further discussion? There's a motion before the court on agenda item number seventeen by County Judge Joe Faust, seconded by Commissioner Philip Cox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. That takes us to agenda item number eighteen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I may, we adjourn.
I second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eighteen by Commissioner Dobinsky, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, folks, for being here today. Thank you, Court.
Good night.